Can we start with H2A first? Can we do H2A first?
Yes. Okay. Good to see everybody up this evening. We will start with our utility authority meeting. This will be a meeting of the Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, September 10th, 2020. Roll call please.
Keith?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Wes?
Richard?
Here.
Okay. Item two is consider approval consent agenda. For minutes of the meeting, approval claims as follows. August purchase orders, fifteen thousand nine thirty-five eighty-eight. September purchase orders, sixty-two thousand five fifty-three fifty-three. September meter deposit refunds, seven hundred dollars in the treasury for. Any additions?
I want to review that. I want to review the consent agenda.
One second. Roll call please.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Here.
Do you have the Hennessy authorities?
Yeah, I should be at the very back of that.
Okay. Item three, so the comment, does anybody got anything they'd like to work on about the board about?
I'll jump in here at the beginning again. Just came in to see if you guys had any monthly update on the water line for Conoco.
I'm sorry, I do not. I was out two and a half weeks with.
Do you know where we're at? Is there anything I can do to help? Is, are we waiting for?
I'm still waiting on estimates from the engineer to see how much it is if we went the other way around. To bring it back to the board.
I have a question on that. Do you know if that affects, since the line from Maine assume comes with greater pressure, does it, would it affect any if it's ran from that way?
There's, the pressure is, will be the same. Yeah. Yeah, it's just static pressure, you know, from our tires and our system. Probably runs out there, I'm gonna guess forty-five to forty-eight pounds per square inch, something like that.
Well, that was this, just wanted to get enough this year. If there was anything I could do, maybe assist. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Item four is under scheduled business discussed, accept, approve, deny, reject, or take action on the following. Item A is discussion with representatives from Waste Connections to discuss changes to solid waste services with possible action.
I'm gonna start. I got ahold of Waste Connections because I asked you guys in an email to go down, if you had time to go down and look at the transportation background to look and see what you thought of how it looks. And every time I go down there, I just cringe with the appearance of how that place looks. I had, like Oklahoma City, Crescent, different places, they have once a month curbside bulky waste pickup where people can put out trash once a month on the curbside and waste management companies come along and they pick it up instead of having a dump like we do where people take it to the dump. So I called Waste Connections to see how much it would cost if they came through and did something like that for us so we would not have to, to see if maybe we can get this place cleaned up down here to help us look better. Because I know we are losing, like last month, or last year, we lost close to eighteen thousand dollars down there. And that's with county paying half of the roll offs. So I got ahold of Brittany over there and she's going to give you guys a proposal of what they have come up with.
Okay.
So in the packet, it'll just explain the stipulations of the curbside bulky waste. So each month we would come around and split the town into two, pick up half the town one day and half the town the other day. It's up to two cubic yards per household, which is approximately four polycards worth of debris. On the second sheet in there that you see, there's the rules of what we can accept and what we can't. Basically the same stuff you would be able to put out, new ball dumpsters, so now batteries, car tires, stuff like that. In order to do that though, it does change the pricing structure here in service. So it would go from one ti- or two times a week service to one time a week fresh service. But with the addition of the bulky waste curbside. So the benefits of being able to do your bulky waste program is you don't have to have a truck or a trailer to haul it to the roll off dumpsters. You could just take it out, you know, your front yard. It keeps the town a lot cleaner. You have a chance every month to clean up. And I put the rates in there, so for one polycard's twelve dollars for the house side service, which we currently offer, if somebody isn't able to bring their polycard out to the street, that's just the same rate. And then for the bulky waste program, it would be an additional three dollars to that polycard rate. Questions?
Why, with the addition of the bulk waste curbside, why is that making us go down to one time per week for residential pickup?
So one time a week service is really the norm across the state and really this area. There's not any other communities in this service area that have twice a week service. One of the biggest benefits for you guys to go down to one time a week service is our trucks wouldn't be on your streets as much. You know, currently they're coming twice a week to service your residential cards. And most of the time, if you, most of the time, people aren't filling up their cards completely full for both days a week. You know, somebody may miss their first day and then they set it out the second day, or their card's halfway full. It's really not a program you see very often anymore.
Like, it's only for inside the city limits, here the twice. Everybody that's outside us in the limits, they would get it once anyway.
Once a week, once a week.
And they survive, I mean, they manage.
Whatever resident has two cars, move with them, what's that done?
Yes.
Yes.
How many ever cards they have at their house currently, nothing like that would change. And we still have the roll off rate in here that, you know, should you decide to do another big cleanup quarterly, the rate in there is cheaper than what it would be if you just were to order roll off. So that's still an option. If, you know, one month, spring, fall, you just decide to do an additional cleanup besides the curbside, it's still available for you and that costs on that sheet too.
So like on the following items that are picked up on bulky, large cardboard boxes broken down and tied into bundles, so they've gotta be tied?
Yeah. It's easier for the guys to.
It would just be curbside setting there.
It'd be set along the, set along the curb, yes.
I don't know that, I'm alright with the residential pickup, but I don't think, I think we got some businesses in town that go in for more than a week to get their.
Well, the businesses still, we still offer that. It's just the residential's not go down to one time a week service.
The businesses, if you look down there, the businesses still, they go have one time a week, two time a week. And then there's some three times a week and five times a week also.
And the bumbling, it just makes it easier for the guys to be able to pick up and, you know, one pick up and.
And save.
Yeah, if it's a windy day or whatever, it's not gonna, all be littering.
So what do we currently pay for twice a week pickup in residential?
I don't know what that rate is because the city bills diff.
Well, right now they are billing us a flat rate. It's not per polycard. And so this would be different for us to go from a flat rate to per.
Per resident.
Per resident.
So we're not paying so much per account?
No, right now we're paying a flat rate.
Oh.
We are, we're paying them a flat rate.
Right. I didn't aware of that.
And we are too, basically, the townspeople are paying a flat rate.
Well, right now the residents are paying fifteen forty-five for a polycard. And so, but we're paying Waste Connections a flat rate, not based on per account.
So this will change and we will be paying per account?
Yes.
So if we're charging our residents fifteen forty-five, we're paying Waste Connections less than that? I hope, I mean.
Well, it would be twelve plus the three, so it would be fifteen.
What we would go to?
Yes.
Okay, no, I'm talking about what we're, what we're paying them now.
Yes.
If we're charging fifteen forty-five, we're paying them less than that, so we're probably paying maybe around twelve now for twice a week service. Now we're gonna be paying twelve for once a week service. I have an issue with the once a week service. I think our townspeople, it's been twice a week for the last, as long as I can remember. And personally, I wouldn't have an issue with it because I've got two cards. But I think a lot of the people, I'm afraid a lot of the people might, I don't know.
I think having the, I think it'd be a definite benefit to have the bulky pickup. And I would, I would give up, I would give up one of my dumpster, one of my trash days to have a bulky pickup.
But the bulky pickups, another three dollars a month per account, right? So it's twelve, even if you don't use it, you're paying for it.
Right.
So is this going to increase if you got?
But it costs me six dollars.
It's a bulk deal.
What's the amount that the customer's gonna have to pay? At homes? Is it still gonna be the fifteen forty-five?
That you're also getting away for your, your.
Right now, we could keep our rates the same and still make more than what we would be paying in Waste Connections.
Okay, Ben. Twelve dollars for the polycard, three dollars for the bulky waste, that's fifteen, and we're charging fifteen forty-five? I think we need more room in there than that.
Well, I'm just saying that we're, we're making.
Because we've got administrative talks involved and things, I mean, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but this bulky pickup would add three dollars to every count. It's not gonna be optional, so somebody can opt in or opt out.
There's a lot of people that don't have the ability to, you know, haul a big mattress to the roll off dumpster. And that, we find is one of the biggest benefits is monthly. A lot of towns will do quarterly or semi annually, but having the opportunity to go every month, you're less likely to see somebody throw a mattress in a ditch or throw something out because they have to store it for six months. It's, you know, once a month, we're gonna come by, you just have to get it to the curb.
Right. I like that idea, you know.
I just, I really, have you guys seen down there?
Yeah. I actually took some carpet down there the other day and it's just.
I really want to, I honestly think that we are violating DQ rules down there. And I really don't want to get, I don't want to get fined.
And Tiffany, don't residents have to pay to dump in there?
Yes, they can.
Okay, it's six dollars for a truck.
They charge by the axle also. I don't know what they charge for.
If you dumped a truck for six dollars, I'm upset.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, we lost, with paying just half the roll offs, we lost eighteen thousand dollars last year down there.
That's what the county pays.
That's with county paying half the roll offs and the roll offs cost us twenty-two, twenty-two thousand five hundred last year.
There's also, there's also another large benefit that, that, for the city, that most cities, like small towns, like, I mean, they all have trouble maintaining their roads. And this puts our trucks on your roads fifty percent, you know, cuts it in half, must be on the road. So it will help, it will make, it will make a big impact on your streets.
Yeah, well, we would still have a truck coming twice a month with the week.
Yeah, but right now it's twice a week, every week, and so now it would be.
Every, once, once a week.
For the residential service. Because we make the same rule as the month, twice a week.
On the bulk pickup, would that be a specified day?
It would be, yes.
And we'd split it up, two days in that, you know, it would be a monthly pickup, but if we split up, we do half the town one day and the other half other day.
Okay, when we're talking a specified day, I'm thinking here, like, say the first Monday or something, or would it be a calendar? Because the reason I'm asking is if it changes, like if it's on the fifteenth of every month, and that's on a weekend, then we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to change that.
So it would be the same day and week of every month, and we would provide a calendar that you can mail out to all the residents and they have it ahead of time, and then Tiffany can have vouchers here to hand out. That way it's easy to keep up with. We usually recommend.
I just wouldn't wanna, yeah, I didn't want something like that. Where it changes every time. Doing a special date would just be a week, just like where it's.
Like say it's the first Wednesday of every month for this half and the second Wednesday of every month for this half, but we put a calendar together where you know, if you're on this part of town, you're the first Wednesday.
So what happens when we have a cleanup week every spring?
They have a dump. You said you bring in dumpster.
At two eighty-six.
So currently you're doing the spring and fall cleanups and you, you can still continue to do that or the, you know, the roll offs, but this curbside bulky waste should really eliminate the need to do that. A lot of towns that do the curbside don't do their big cleanups anymore because it's just not necessary. But that's an option that they still have. And the roll offs are at a, you know, a discounted rate for the city for that, but.
So you've got trees and limbs here, not more than one inch in diameter, so that's not very big.
One of, one of the things we gotta remember on that is we got manpower going out there and picking all this stuff.
I understand, yeah.
So we can't have logs, you know, eighteen inch, twenty-four inch logs that you're having a guy pick up. And that gets back into the safety issue of trying to get them, we're trying to be as safe as we can with our employees also.
They're not gonna be out there, you know, measuring it.
Yeah, well, I mean, if it's a little bigger, you know, so be it. But we're not going out there measuring one.
The reason I'm asking all this, I'm, I'm all in favor of this. I think curbside pickup, there's a lot of people, like you said, that don't have the vehicles or ability to get things down to our dump site. But the, the only thing that concerns me a little bit is if we close that, which I totally agree that it's a mess, if people have bigger limbs.
You weren't talking about closing it though, were you? Oh, you were? I thought you were talking about just making less traffic to where we're closing it. Oh, I don't remember closing it.
Bigger, bigger limbs of things.
If we have limbs bigger than three inches, I didn't get disposed of.
Yeah, what, I mean.
Be home down there to dump if it's that big.
What are we gonna do with them? We've gotta give a DQ.
We've been doing. All we've seen, all we've seen other cities do. A farmer can go out here and burn a hundred and eighty acres worth of wheat and nobody's ever worried about it.
What other cities.
I understand that.
No, well.
What other cities have done is maybe you open it up once a quarter, you know, or twice a year, or whatever, and then have somebody, you know, run it on a Saturday, you know, this once a quarter will run on Saturday and will provide you roll off boxes so people can get rid of some of that stuff that won't fit into the bulky waste.
I really don't wanna do that. I mean, I'm just throwing out things that I think we're gonna be faced with, you and, and the people here in Town Hall and us, you know, things of people who's got, who's got limbs that big around. And I don't know if we're gonna have to, you know, maybe we need to decimate it.
If you're closing it down for the cow, her limbs off, then we're gonna get a red tag on our door.
Firewood. When you get them bad, they're gonna be firewood.
We're also throwing in on the including the new dumpsters and new polycards also. There's a lot of dumpsters that need to be replaced. I think the polycards, at least the ones I've around, are in pretty good shape, but the dumpsters, they need replaced. They're bad.
What would we, what would we have to be paying? We're gonna be paying these guys, if I'm, in my situation, you know.
I've been out for doing it for eighteen months.
We're gonna be paying waste, and I don't have any illness to you guys. You guys are just doing a hell of a job here. I put you up in the dead city, you're doing great. But I gotta answer to the people. Right now, you're gonna, and under my circumstances, I'm looking at myself here, or using myself, I got an additional card, so I'm looking at eighteen dollars and plus the other three, twenty-one dollars a month. I would think the city of Hennessy would like to make two or three dollars off of you guys doing that work. So it's gonna be twenty-four, twenty-five dollars that I'm gonna get a bill on every month for my trash. Plus you, you cut me one day, which is not an issue to me, but it might be somebody, you know. Can we cut your, can we cut your pay? Can you guys make us a better deal?
Why not, we're, we're already at, it's already pretty low for us. I mean, we're, we're at a low point anyway, I mean, as far as price wise. We can, I mean, we can discuss it or whatever, but it's, it's pretty close to where we need to be.
So what do we do if we deny this deal? If we say, hey, we don't wanna do that? What's the game plan then?
Can we just keep everything the same? Can we just keep everything the same? But we'll have to figure out something with the dump.
Do you offer a once a month or twice a month bulk pickup?
This is with the monthly or here?
With this new proposal or currently?
Pardon?
The current proposal's out here.
The, the new, the new, the new one that we're proposing right now is a once a month, once a month bulky. That's what we're proposing now.
Because of the rate you're quoting us?
Yes, yes, once a month, once a month, once a month bulky.
Okay. Now, on that, once a month bulk, say somebody sleeps in late, doesn't get their trash put out for the regular trash and ain't bagging it up and you pick it up with the regular bulk?
I mean, if it's under their two cubic yards, you could, but you really don't wanna recommend people putting bags of trash out because if the dogs are getting into it, I mean, bulky waste is meant to be debris, stuff like that. I really wanna promote putting out food waste on the curbside. Then it becomes a big issue with littering. I mean, if it's within the two cubic yards are gonna pick it up, it's not really something you would wanna encourage to do.
I would say that probably handled similarly than it is now too. I mean, I mean, you're, you're our advertisement and we want the city to look good. So if we have a truck in the area and somebody misses their trash, we're gonna do what we can to get them, to get them taken care of. So if we have a truck in the area, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to get them taken care of for the occasional miss.
And you all have done a tremendous job. I mean, it's, the service has been, been excellent. We've got some public back there, but.
I don't like the ones a week, to be honest with you. I, I see up and down Oklahoma Street where people have got their trashcans already overfilled constantly with it being twice a week. I think the two cubic yards really isn't a whole lot of space because honestly, I could fill that up right now with the small amount of tree limbs I have that I've been cutting, trying to get rid of the good tree limbs in my backyard. I think the problem with the dump down there is it just needs to be cleaned up and taken care of. I mean, instead of it looking like a dump all the time, it just needs to be taken care of, you know, and some stricter guidelines put in place.
It's, I don't know how we can because we might, people bring in appliances and metals and we got a pile of that and.
But you have the recyclers that they can haul the metal to. I mean, there's gotta be a point that you tell them, stop bringing us your appliances when the recyclers are down there and then you won't make much, but they'll give you something for it.
Well, I will tell you, Okeen, we call Okeen, Okeen has, I think they get like maybe three, three roll offs a month, maybe?
Hmm, it's either two or three.
Two or three a month. People pay to dump in those, once they're full, nobody else can, nobody else can dump. But everything goes in the roll offs.
They're limited to what they got, then when it's full of that month, they're done, right?
Yeah, nothing else, I mean, they don't take anything else, no trees, no, I mean, nothing. Everything goes in those roll offs.
And that's the way the cities, the city of Okeen has done it. I mean, that's the way they wanna do it. Not, not.
Yeah, that's how, that's how Okeen does. Fairview, they don't have anything, they don't take, they don't do anything for their, for their people. Except for, I think, once a year, twice a year, they'll have, they'll bring in some dumpsters and do like townwide cleanup. But that's how Fairview does it. So we've called, Kingfisher, they have theirs, but if you don't live in the city, or if you don't have a water bill and you are not in that vehicle when you go to dump, if your name is not on that water bill and you are not in that vehicle to dump, you're not dumping.
That's a good rule.
Did Kingfisher go in and open back up? I don't think.
The only issue is, that would be an issue here because.
And there's some about strict guidelines because of the EQ. There's some type of strict guidelines because of the new DQ. And so those are different things that I'm just scared of for the town of Hennessy.
I totally agree with you Tiffany. I hate the way our dump looks, let alone the fact that we probably don't want to ask them if we're in violation.
I don't wanna ask them for the rules because I am scared to death they're going to come and visit us and say.
It needs to, something needs to happen down there. And I do like the bulky pickup because I've been approached by several people who said, you know, can the town come get this or can the town come get that because I don't have a pickup and I don't.
Out of curiosity, like our, the Hennessy United and the CAT team and like when the churches do things for people, you know, trim the trees, stuff like that, I mean, they're gonna fill up the two cubic yards really quick and they're not gonna have a dump to be able to take limbs or anything too if we shut it down. I mean, that's gonna limit our CAT team and so on and so forth. And they're doing that out of the goodness of their hearts.
And I, I understand that and I don't know where that stuff would go. And that's why I was asking, you know, if we've got limbs this big. Hopefully there's some farmers out there that need a wash film, you know, or something because I don't, I don't know where they would go. But it, it is, I think it is a burden of the city of Hennessy cannot bear because at one time, years ago, we looked into a chipper to put down there and it's super expensive to get one big enough to do us what we need to do. Super dangerous to operate and.
You couldn't afford to work your heart out with it.
I don't think you could either Wes, and the maintenance on the things, I mean, there's just.
One of the things that we could get creative on is like that as far as taking. One of, one of the things that we could get creative on is like that, as far as taking, taking waste. And I know, I know it's a little ways away, but we could give the option to the residents to bring waste to our landfill, uh, and, you know, we could probably get creative on a rate there for, for a cleanup, two times a year, a quarter, quarterly, or, you know, whatever, whatever you guys wanna do, they'd have that option to do that as well. Then it would go straight to the landfill and empty the mess at, at the transfer station, at your transfer station. We'd sure entertain doing something like that. I mean, none of that really affects me. I was, that's questions that other people are gonna have.
And when you brought up the, the thing of the poly carts down Oklahoma Avenue, and I see them all over town that are, a lot of time mine, the lids, they're gonna have to hard wake 'cause it's full, but I don't put it out every time either. If it's half-full, it'll still sit by.
That's mine.
So I'm guilty of creating that full problem, because, you know, they may come by on a Thursday, and they, they may not be there until next Monday.
That's what I feel like every, I'll miss two times and then get it stuck out, but I miss, but I have two carts. So I, for me, one, one time a week would probably be just fine.
How many, Tiffany, you know how many, what averaging, how many roll-offs we're averaging per month, is it four, five?
I caught them while they were going down the other side.
Oh. They were going down the, they were going down the side and ran it out.
Probably down to four or five a week.
Probably close to two or three a week, two to three a week.
Yeah, it, it just depends, it's between two and three and five. It just depends the time of, uh, the time of year, actually. Whether it's gonna be two or three, sometimes it's five.
A week.
A week.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, what?
I'm sorry, part of, I think part of.
Would it be feasible at all for you to operate those who want it twice a week? Service pickup twice a week, plus the monthly?
For the residential.
Would that be feasible for you all to even do?
No, 'cause if we went to one time a week, that truck's only coming here one time a week.
Can you just have one truck that makes?
For the residential stuff.
Can we do a survey, like table it and do a survey?
I don't wanna split. I, I think that's a bad idea. I really do. I think if you have a lot of trash, you need to purchase another or.
Get two poly carts.
Tiffany has suggested that, that we do a survey, uh, and see what the, what the people think, table it.
I can tell you what they're gonna say.
Yeah, they're gonna, because what, what we're doing is for Saban County.
If I, they're gonna say, you're gonna raise my rates and drop me down to one pickup a week.
And they're gonna say no, I know, I understand, but.
That's exactly what they're gonna say.
On the other side of that coin, the bulky pickup may entice them.
It doesn't affect everybody, though, but I got a pickup. You know what I'm saying?
I know, but you may not have any work to take it, because.
Wouldn't it be feasible to do a hybrid, like if we were to get, do the, do the bulky pickup, but then still get roll-offs, but do like Okeem best and say, okay, this is what we have, when it fills up, we're done?
That's not a bad idea. I didn't know we were going through that many damn roll-offs.
Yeah.
We can, we cannot.
You can't make things.
We cannot continue to be in the red eighteen thousand dollars a year, correct? I mean, that.
We've been doing it for years, though, down there.
Remember, it's a service to the community, not a moneymaker.
Now, I understand, Keith, but I, I.
Now, I bet you the thing, if we kept track of how many people dumped down there in town residents versus county, even though counties pay in half, but I bet you it's probably four to one.
Yeah, and the biggest thing with those is you really have to be charging enough to cover your costs. I mean, all the other cities that have these similar, uh, dumps, convenience centers, they, they're charging enough to cover the cost, and you have to have a utility bill, or you're limited to one dump a month, but, I mean, it's very strict on.
Keith, I agree with you to the point that it's a service to the community, but I feel like our utilities, uh, our utilities and our sales taxes, the only revenue we've really got, and, uh, police protection, fire protection, the streets, all of that's a service that I, the garbage has to at least break even. And I feel like we need to be over and above that to cover our administrative costs, because we're doing the billing and collecting and. It, it has to.
And I think she's right, I think she nailed it. We're not charging enough.
That's what I was, what would we have to charge to make that look better in the books?
Eighteen thousand dollars a year. How you get it, I don't care.
Well, that's twelve hundred dollars a month.
Well, I have a proposal, um, I think, why don't we table this and try to get a survey out of some kind to see how people feel about the bulky pickup, um, and people, I just, I, I just think we're gonna have to go up. I mean, we try to keep our rates low, and we do that for a number of years, and then we have to spike all at once, and I really feel like we need to keep up with this thing.
Well, this sort of rates would pretty much stay the same while we lose that one day of pickup, and so they're not gonna be paying, they're not gonna be having to pay a lot more.
Not a lot more, but I don't, I don't think we can pay fifteen dollars to waste connections and charge fifteen forty-five. I don't think we can make forty-five cents a month per res, you know, per account. That, that just, that's not feasible to me. No.
No, I understand.
So I, I feel like we need to maybe have you come up with some kind of a proposal, like maybe seventeen, seventeen fifty, I don't, I'm just throwing numbers.
We'll look at it and then see. I'll look at it and see.
And kinda see where we compare with other communities on trash rates.
Okay.
Um, 'cause I do feel like we're, I do feel like we're probably not. But I, I don't want you all to go away feeling like we're totally shoddy down.
No, not at all.
I, I think this is something.
And if you guys have questions, you know, later.
You can always get a hold of us, pick in and try to get a hold of us too. You know, and, and that was one of the things, was is getting away from the, the roll-offs, I know that's what you had to ask. We'll see what we can do to do that, this bulky waste was a great option, she had to ask about it, and.
I, I like the idea, it's just, uh, man, it's just, it's a tough world right now. You got fifty thousand, or fifty million people unemployed.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying?
But just, just.
I mean, it's just a tough deal.
Yeah.
And I understand your side of that deal too. Like, you know, we've got some businesses around here that are struggling.
You mentioned something about the price, and just, just to be honest with you.
So we, we've given you guys an all-in price for years, you know, twenty, twenty years or how long the service is. And that doesn't account for the growth of the city. You guys have annexed a couple, a couple of communities in, a couple of, of communities in, I think, some neighborhoods, correct? So our price has stayed the same, and the service, the service level continues to go up. So when she brought this to us, you know, we do, we do an analysis and kinda see where we're at financially. And, uh, it, it wasn't, it wasn't good, it wasn't good. So we wanna fix your problem, and we wanna be a long-term, you know, we wanna have a long-term partnership, and that's, we're trying to fix this to where the city looks good, we can provide, provide a service, and, you know, make, make a return as well. So, um, we wouldn't do this if we thought it was gonna make the city look bad, because what we wanna do is be able to say, hey, call Hennessy, you know, for another city that we're trying to get, or more business, call Hennessy and, and, and ask them how we're doing. And we want people to drive through here and see brand-new carts and dumpsters, and for the city to look good. So we want the town, we want the town to look good, you're our advertisement, and we want a long-term, you know, business where we make a little bit, long-term relationship, where we can make a little money and, and provide you a good service. The other thing is, on the roll-offs, and I know this is a while ago, but I, I can almost guarantee you everywhere I've been, and I've been a lot of places, the city's probably using, utilizing those roll-offs, it's probably thirty percent, and, and seventy percent's outside of the city, outside of the county, I wouldn't even say outside of the county, 'cause when people hear about free trash, free place to dump, they're, they're, they're coming, they're coming from everywhere to dump in there, and you guys, and you guys are, are.
We've seen that all over.
So.
So when you replace up poly carts, they won't be those army green ones, will they?
No.
They'll be the same.
Brand-new, brand-new blue, brand-new blue. Well, I, really, I meant what I said, you guys do a hell of a job here.
We appreciate you, we appreciate you, we appreciate your business, we really do.
We really do.
I like your drivers too, your drivers are very.
Very nice.
Very protective of other things, because I've seen him go in between vehicles and get a, a bill, and then back out and make sure that he was doing a, a good job.
I don't even know who you're talking about, but I just, I got a compliment to pay to him. My lid broke off of my poly cart, and I hope my son will ditch. The next day, or the next pickup, he fixed it, and I'm thinking, he fixed that thing thing. So I got, I will give a compliment, I appreciate that, I really do.
I'll let him know. Well, thank you.
Well, look at it.
Yeah, thank you.
Let us look at this.
I did not realize we were losing eighteen thousand dollars a year.
Well, I didn't lose any money, 'cause I did not know we were losing that money.
Thank you, guys.
How much money does the city have to bring in?
Um, last year, we brought in sixteen thousand. They brought in sixteen thousand.
They brought in sixteen thousand, and we're still eighteen thousand in the hole?
Yeah, we spent thirty-five more than that.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all, appreciate it, thank you. Brought in sixteen thousand in a year? So if we, we lost eighteen?
So we need to raise it up to fifteen dollars per vehicle then?
So to even break even, we need to start, yeah, fifteen, fifteen dollars.
Basically, you could, you could double the, double the fee and.
And that'll lower some of that, that'll, that'll stop a lot of that unnecessary dumping as well.
Well, I'm afraid what it'll do, Wes, people won't pay that, and they'll go dump in the bar ditches.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of that will happen too, if you're right.
I like that.
And that's what county paying half the roll-offs, which the roll-offs was twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Well, I didn't know.
And I believe it.
Last week, Brenda wasn't working anymore, but, oh, yeah, she was. All these girls up front have been.
Yeah.
Doing the dump.
She's, she's talked during the COVID shutdown, right? But she's, she just doesn't know.
She was playing.
She was a little good for the dump too, I mean.
Okay, item B, subject to any resignations, not received prior to posting agenda. Item five, new business, sort of comments, council person reports, anybody got anything?
I have a question. We're supposed to raise the water rates, and we need to do that for seven years, and I remember that we're supposed to raise the water rates. Was that for one year, or was that for, it's been for several years.
It's ten, it's until it's changed again. Make a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Richard?
Okay, this will be a meeting of the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees, September tenth, two thousand and twenty. Roll call, please.
Keith?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Wes?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Item two is report from the Hennessy United Board.
They were currently handling a red carpet night this evening.
I heard that, yeah, I heard about it once.
I didn't even realize it until.
They changed the date, I didn't know that they changed the date.
Anything else going on?
I'm not sure, I'm worried about, you know, you know, not loving it.
Do you know where our signs are at, or where they're at, making our signs, or, or entrance and making signs for the town?
I can speak to that a little bit. I told Tiffany I would go down and talk with, uh, Carol last week, and I didn't get it done, so we need to.
Okay, so are you good to go?
Well, I'll go with you, whatever, just not tomorrow, but, uh.
Um, he has them done, um, we just have to, um, OG and E, they emailed me too about the electric for them. But I think there was, like, on Highway fifty-one, the widening of the road where they initially wanted to put that was in the way of the white, 'cause that was part of my email too.
Yeah, they were gonna do that.
Um, I think I've gotta get on that.
I think we're probably gonna talk to the D O T about it.
D O T.
Yeah. But I think we've done it from right or left.
Yes.
Okay, item three is consider the approval of the consent agenda, minutes of August meetings, approval of claims as follows, August purchase orders, one thousand eight forty-six twenty-nine, September purchase orders, twenty-nine thousand nine forty-nine sixty-four, September restricted sales tax fund, thirty-two thousand seven fifty-two sixteen, um, September library fund, three seventy-four oh six, September street and alley fund, thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents, and the following reports, treasure, library, and lease. Any additions or questions? I'm gonna do. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, second, roll call, please.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
That's all right.
You need a minute? Captain?
Okay, David and Chad, you wanna come up?
Days before duty. Okay, for many years now, uh, Chad and David have been reserve officers for the town. This is giving up their own time and, you know, to come out and serve the citizens, uh, of the town of Hennessy. Uh, so now they've got more things on their plates, and they have, it's, they're finding it harder to, to find time, but, you know, when we needed them, they were here for us, so I wanted to give them a token of my appreciation. Um, they both resigned from the reserve program, they both know that they are eligible to come back anytime they want, both of them. Um, you've done us a great service, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate what you guys have done for us. Um, but they resigned for personal reasons, 'cause they need just a little bit more time with their families and their jobs and things like that. Um, but I still wanted to offer a little bit of the token of my appreciation, so on these plaques, I got a plaque for both of you that says, in recognition of your outstanding service, presented to Sergeant Chad Hurst and Officer David Fuchs, with great appreciation for your many years of dedication and commitment to the citizens of the town of Hennessy. Thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty from the Hennessy Police Department, so. For you?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, and like I said, welcome to come back anytime, anytime. For you?
You got it?
Yep.
Can I have one more presentation?
Congratulations.
Um, you guys can go.
Thank you, Damon. Thank you for your service.
Allison Hurst?
I was gonna keep him for you. I was gonna hold him for you.
Again, I want Allison to come up also. I can tell you that I have been married for twenty years. She has dedicated a lot to this job, just as I have. Um, so with that being said, uh, Allison Hurst, Chad's wife, I wanted to give her a certificate of appreciation also for supporting her husband. Uh, so certificate of appreciation, grateful appreciation, the Hennessy Police Department presents this certificate of recognition to Allison Hurst for your commitment and sacrifice that made positive impacts on the citizens of the town of Hennessy. Thank you for the support you gave, thank you for the support which gave strength and purpose to your spouse's service to the Hennessy Police Department. Thank you for supporting.
I'm sorry, right, no more, you're in the.
Should I want it by smiley emoji?
You're smiling back. Thank you. I see you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four is citizens comment. This is anybody Where crap?
Hennessy's COVID count today is one thirty-eight.
What was it? One thirty-eight?
One thirty-eight.
That's a human death. How many are active?
Well, it depends. See, there's a hundred and twenty-three recovered. I don't know whether they're
So, but then you gotta take out the deceased.
And then there's, we now, we have four that are deceased now after the two last two from the nursing home. Even two before that. She confirmed to me today that both of the most recent ones.
You're gonna argue against the funeral period?
Well, it depends on the website, what the website says.
Yeah, I know, but they don't have time to, to get them. But we're the only ones in the county who's had any deaths. And Hennessy has a hundred and thirty-eight who've had it, okay? Kingfisher has a hundred and two and they're twice our population. My question is since our numbers are so high, why hasn't this board even addressed that problem by requiring masks in any way, shape, or form, since our schools do? That's my question to you.
Well, our schools do in the classroom. They're not in sporting events.
They don't require them in classroom. They're only required on the bus and in the hallways. And then in the classroom only if they can.
And I'm thinking about for Ken teachers in her building, they're required. But you're right.
Can I answer something to that?
Yeah.
So I was at home for two and a half weeks with my, you know, cause I was exposed. Um, then my son got it from his girlfriend. I'm sure there was kissing involved. So, you know.
Yeah.
But I was also around close contact with my son for more than fifteen minutes numerous times. Sat in his bedroom, talked to him, had lunch, dinner with him numerous times. And I went and got tested before I came back to work the last week and I was negative. Never came down with coronavirus. But yet I was in close contact with my son numerous times. He was sick. He had the cough. He had, he had the symptoms. He wasn't asymptomatic. He had the symptoms. So if it's so contagious, then why didn't I get it?
You may have just been one of the lucky ones.
So
There's so much stuff going on around this.
So my whole thing is, yes, I, you know, when a mask is required, then I wear it. I do try to stay six feet away from elderly people.
You ever standing close to men?
Not for more than fifteen minutes. But, but what I'm saying is, is if you, if you read the guidelines of more than fifteen minutes masks are required, when are you in a situation where you're close to somebody for more than fifteen minutes in town? That you would be required to have a mask?
I mean, this meeting, we're all here for an hour and no one has a mask, but it's
Apparently there were a hundred and thirty-eight people who were, who were close at some time.
But I would say, look at the, at the nursing home. That's over half of that population of that hundred and thirty-eight, I guarantee you.
Well, it's probably forty-five is what I'm guessing, forty-five. But where did they get it? Hello? From the workers, from family members who came in?
And then I would say America.
Remember, workers aren't allowed to go in there yet still.
Well, I know, but I mean, to begin with, you know.
But from what I understand, and this is, I probably shouldn't say since we're being recorded, but I, I'd heard that a, I'd heard that a, a kitchen worker had originally had it. Well, that's, that's the one person that's gonna have contact with everybody is the person that prepares the food, so.
Well, and now today, or yesterday, was it yesterday or the day before? That the, yeah, we've had the doctor. I've got a doctor in Kingfisher who's got it too. We've had our doctor here who's had it and his family. We, I, I just wonder what you're thinking is. I mean, is this all, is this all Is it all poli, is it all politics?
I think, I think that we can, we can make a, we can mandate Hennessy to, that every, if you're in Hennessy, then you wear your mask. It's not gonna be enforced. I mean, that's, that's It's, it's hard to, uh, we can't put that, we can't give that to our police department and tell them to enforce this.
We don't have enough officers.
Not enough. And, and it's, there, there's Well, I mean, that, that aside, I mean, there's other places that have done it and had, there's nothing that says that it's illegal.
Without an order.
I mean, we, no, no, we
We're mandated. Have you seen a Walmart?
No.
Haven't either.
But I know like loves, they have a, they require a mask to go into loves.
And how many do it?
But, but, you know, I sat there and watched people go in without a mask and
Dollar store's the same way.
Dollar store's the same way and Walmart.
Over half the people that go in there when I went on.
So there's places in town that require masks, but there's still I think, I think as a town, I think we should encourage people to do their due diligence, but as far as mandatory, I, I don't know. I mean, it would be, it would be only for show to say, oh, everybody wear your mask cause there's no way that you're gonna go out and enforce it. Um, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I wear a mask, but
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was talking with you. I'm sorry. I missed what you were saying. I missed what you were saying about why.
I don't, it, it, it doesn't make sense to me. None of it does. Boy, did you read the springs this weekend or last weekend and they're running around over there just panicked like you couldn't believe. And I go into a restaurant, well, you gotta put this mask on to get into this restaurant. And you walk over and you sit down and you take it off. Uh, does that make sense to you, boy?
No, it doesn't. But, yes, I understand that, but
Or we're waiting in a, in line to go into a restaurant because you can't get in, they're quarter capacity. And there's probably, I know twenty of us from out there. Six of our group.
Let me ask you
And none of one of us had a mask on.
Were the waiters and waitresses wearing masks though?
Yes, because they made it.
Right, well.
They made them. Do you think that they wanted one?
Don't, probably not. Do you think that that makes a difference though?
No, I don't.
That of them wearing them when you're there with your family and you're used to
Because I don't think that mask will stop the virus.
Wow.
I think a virus could And the other side of that is what we're gonna do when police need to get there. We, but we've had the flu for years. The numbers on flu are actually higher, actually higher. We never acted like this in society.
How many people died from it though?
I think we're being coached.
How many people, I mean
Business and you read that, don't any, don't come in here unless you got a mask. That's fascism. I hate to say this, every town board, public meeting, but that is fascism. The government didn't mandate that. They set a guideline and the businesses said, we better do this. So the government, you can't file a class action lawsuit on them because they never made a law. They got the people to do it. And what do I do now? When does it end? When does it end?
If the
That's my question.
If the governor had said, across the state, you wouldn't have any problem with it though, right?
Well, we adopted, whenever the COVID started, we, we, we voted to adopt the, whatever the state mandates, we voted to adopt to the town.
You would have to do it then, right?
At that point, yes.
I mean, it would, yeah.
Cause we voted automatically.
That's what we did, yeah.
I don't know. I got, I, I hate to be that way, but I just see it different. I really do. Now, do I think there are people that are risk factors? Guess I do. I surveyed them. My mother's one.
And from what I read about the mask, it's not to prevent you from catching the disease. It's supposed to help prevent you from spreading.
Spreading, yeah, I understand.
It's supposed to keep the, the water droplets of your saliva mouth down to where
Why don't we do this when we have flu?
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I can't answer. I just, from what I read about why they
I agree. I understand, but it, it doesn't make sense.
I realize that, I realize that, I realize that the people who died were all elderly. I mean, but just like with Marge, seventy-nine years old, she would have had her eightieth birthday, Christmas Day. I think she probably would have liked to have seen that and I think her kids would have too.
I agree. I hate it. But that, I mean, what do we do? Do we just quit living?
No, I think we just have to be cautious, take precautions.
No doubt about it. I agree with that a hundred percent. I think you could do better if we all just worked our hands.
Well, of course. But I went to the grocery store here today. There was one person in there who had on a mask. Other than the two clerks that were wearing them, the rest of the staff, they weren't wearing them. And some guy saw somebody and, oh, he hugged him. Oh, I hadn't seen you in so long. And I could tell, and she didn't have on a mask either. And recently I was caught. I was just gonna run in, take something, then I was caught in a situation where I was, and I didn't even, it felt so darn numb. Uh, just so routine and so, just like I was alive and everything, it was just fine for someone to come up and hug me. It was like, oh, yeah, that's great. And I'm like, holy crap. I got back in the car and I thought, I didn't have on a mask and she didn't have on one. Maybe as you get older, you will change. Or, or if it affects you directly and I, 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 I hope it doesn't happen to you.
I do too. I don't know about anybody, but I don't think
I have a granddaughter at O S U who tested positive. They're on the fourth floor of the hotel, all, you know, a bunch of the kids.
What were your sons' symptoms?
He had a cough. He had fever. He had the congestion.
Did he lose smell and taste?
He didn't. His girlfriend did.
Did she get that knack when she recovered?
Yeah.
The problem is, we really don't know how, you know, what's gonna happen to this thing. You may recover. And then, you know, we have one, two, you can get again. After you recover from a punch, you can get again. There's just so much unknown. You don't know
Is it
How it's going to affect your health years ago. They're just kinda iffy on it. I think it might be wider, but Thank you. Had to ask.
Thank you. Okay.
I tried to write your article after that question was
I wanted to ask it last month.
Other scheduled business, discuss approved, deny, reject, or have the work taken action on the following items. Discuss with possible action to renew the annual hardware agreement with computer information concepts for financial software. This is the, the computer program that runs the town. Does the utility billing, all of the accounting correct?
Yes.
So
The price stayed the same.
So if somebody questions, that's great. You got anything to add to that Tiffany? I will make a motion to accept agreement for the computer upgrade. I guess it's not upgrade for the
It could just be the annual
It's just an annual renewal for
Annual renewal?
For support services. Correct? Can I get a second? Second. Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item B is discussion with possible action on the pavilion plans. Richard, I think you put that on and have a model here. I, I would like to remind you that we're gonna meet in January to discuss future development. So is this something that
But Bert, is it because of that I brought this in? I had this model set up for some time. I think this January meeting Tiffany that you proposed is marvelous, just marvelous. Bring the whole community together. But what I think Bert also, instead of just wait to January and keep going into that meeting, cold turkey, we start talking about these things. And that's why I brought the pavilion in. I'll keep it as short as, I'll keep it short. I'll keep it real short. I went to my architect and told him about the pavilion and some ideas that we'd like to see in a pavilion. And my architect said, and I asked, could he do a schematic? And he said, yes, I could. He said, but for the things you're talking about, he said, a schematic wouldn't get the idea over with. You need to build a model. And architects do these models. They're much more professional than, than what I have done here. I'd like to do my best. But we need to do something, either a schematic or a model, to get the ball rolling on the pavilion. And we passed the bond and we built the dome and dome went up. We passed the bond for the aquatic park and aquatic park got built. The pavilion is gonna be a bunch different animal. There's not gonna be the possibility of a bond. We're gonna have to do it through foundation giving and through grants. So when we do this project, we have to do a little bit of time. And looking at Oklahoma City, I can't remember when they passed that first bond for their downtown development, but I know they've been at it for about forty years.
A long time.
A long time. A good, another, the best example I can think here in Hennessy is you, Bert. You kept land at the cemetery. You did not sell lots on there because you wanted to have a chapel out there. And eventually somebody stepped forward and made that nice donation and I was donor and the chapel's out there. So if we do a pavilion, we need to get something visually there. I worked in sales. I was a real estate agent almost thirty years. People cannot visualize things. You tell them, this house would look better if you paint this blue wall a cream color or something. People cannot visualize. You can arrange, you can arrange this pavilion a hundred different ways. But if we're gonna do it in steps, maybe this would, the center building, do that. And then maybe five years later, put the swing on. And then five or ten years later, put this wing on. You could put the big building, I tried to take the big building and cover one half of the, that area, which is basically the lumberyard. I left a little green so it wouldn't, wouldn't be over gilt. You could put this big building on this side. You could put it on the west side. You could put it on the alley side. You could put it in the center. How you rearrange, how you arrange these things, I don't care. The one thing that would really be nice is to have a pedestrian walkway, which is very common in city development. The alley, as I measured it Tiffany, I don't know what the legal width of an alley is here in Hennessy, but I measured it and I think it came out sixteen feet. I just measured the, the asphalt that was there. But with the forty foot width, you could, when you had a, you could have your food vendors and various vendors set up in your pedestrian walkway. And still have room for vehicles to come through. What it will do
So that alley wouldn't be closed.
Pardon?
That wouldn't close.
It wouldn't close the alley. What it does, it takes all these buildings facing Main Street. I've seen this. What happens? They're facing Main Street with their advertise, they'll flip around and start catering on the backside. They'll have two entrances of their building, front and back. It would, it would be nice to do two things. To honor our energy. It would, it would be nice to do two things, to honor our energy in industry, which is petroleum and wind. So it puts some windmills in, and perhaps we could get donations on some of this, like a pump, oil pump, oil tanks. I think what the, you guys did at the ranch room with that, very, very, were so clever. So you could, you made that bar, so you could do that here, where you could have a vendor if you had a large enough oil tank. This building is, I tried to stay accurate with my dimensions, I'm not sure I did. But anyway, this building should match the dimensions of the senior citizen center. I don't like the senior citizen center, it has very few windows, and the few windows it has overlooks the parking lot. And I'd like something more attractive for them. Now, I, there's a handout in there. I, I did Terrell's building. Oh, it's better. If you look at Terrell's building, on the front of this building, he did two things. He varied the color, he's got black on the south side, silver on the north side. He's got his siding running vertical on the, on the south side, and horizontal on the north side. The other thing he did is he flipped the siding around on the silver side, where normally face outside faces inside, he gives it a different textures. So, those are the kinds of things that you can do. He also put that vertical divider in between to break up the building. The red is not red paint, it's, it's a red panel metallic, metal with fluorescent lighting. And there's a night picture, the night lighting, but you, third page three, there's the night lighting on it. You can see lighting has become a great big deal in the architectural world. On page four, this building is in the design district of Miami. This is illuminated siding, which is expensive, which is expensive. And what he did is angled it. So that's something else you can do to make it, uh, uh, different, to make it special, to make it unique. I think the ranch room is unique. You have a Victorian building, you walk in, you feel like you're in the Rocky Mountains with the panelling in, in there. So, these are the things we can incorporate in our design. The Terrell's building, the Miami building, and then, what I tried to do, my fingers were too fat, I wanted to do more intricate, um, pipe work. And I'm trying, what I tried to do is mimic a refinery, to honor our petroleum industry. And then, put in the windmills to honor our windmill industry. This is a fan blade. I know when they were putting the windmills up east of town, there'd be a truck or pickup park that you, don't, I never realized how big those windmills are. Once they're up, they look big, but when they're laying on the ground, and there's a pickup park by it, and that pickup, it looks like this, you realize how big it is. Now, I was talking with Jack Quirk about this. I said, I laid it on my side because I'm afraid the wind would take it. Have a wind and it would blow it and dam some. What would be nice is if we could take that windmill blade and stand it straight up. And Jack said he had seen that somewhere.
They did with the semi on I-35.
Pardon?
They did with the semi on I-35 where they have like, it's no, it's sticking straight up near, so...
Yeah, you know, I think they could stand up to a wind, but those fan blades, I think, are about a hundred and forty feet long, and the wind start blowing. But anyway, I throw this out. The main point I wanna make tonight is, we need to start thinking about what we need to put on our agenda for January, and I know a lot of it's gonna be infrastructure. But if we're gonna get, do the pavilion, we need to set up some kind of plans and get started on it. And I guess that's all I had to say. There's gonna have to be some lock preparation work. This thing is not gonna be cheap. You could put in some parking, you got open ditches on the street, but if those put a culvert pipe in it, where the ditches are, you could put some parking in here. You might have a small event, and that would be adequate. Again, you don't have to do everything, but have a plan. It's just like the donor, the donor popped out seventy-five thousand to build that chapel, you don't know, once you have a plan and get started on it, generally, the real thumb is it generates enthusiasm, and you'll have people come in. The other thing I have seen in these large developments, if you have a large weekend event, what do you do during a week? In some of these large facilities, what they'll do, they'll pretend they're... Pretend this is a display case. They'll have several display cases, maybe they'll make a square or a rectangle. When there's an event to be held, what they'll do is build storage to the side in the building, and this thing gets taken. Now, you can have your big event. And when they, when we do these display cases, when they make their square, or make their rectangle, this would be on the outside. But they'll set their display cases in the inside, where they, where they walk around it. These will be double height, so they can get quite a large retail space. I've seen public facilities where there are a lot of vendors, and all those vendors have to move, get out of the way when they have a big event. But I've seen some facilities where they don't have so many vendors, and the vendors stay there all the time, twenty-four, seven, to the side. But when it's nighttime, it's time to close up, again, they'll just roll it off, put it in that room, lock the, lock the door, whatever they're selling, jewelry from Czechoslovakia, jewelry from Mexico, woodworking, whatever, it's safe. So, if we're gonna have the pavilion, we've got to make some plans. You've got to show people what we want to do. And I'll just cut it off at that. There's a couple items on the agenda, Bert, I'm gonna jump you on. I was under some confusion that we couldn't have spot, that Hennessy was operating under spot zoning. And what that meant, if you had a string of commercial buildings, you couldn't take one building and rezone it residential and turn it into housing. Where, uh, in the small towns where we lost so many retail businesses and we, and buildings are falling down, at least turn it into residential. But we don't have spot zoning, so if anything on Main Street, we can zone into whatever we want to. I think Kingfisher just made a change where they have mixed zoning. If you go to a larger city, you might have an apartment store, next to it, you might have a office, and next to that, you might have a condo building, it's all mixed up, mixed use. So we can do that on Main Street. That's something to consider on January.
I think we, I don't think spot zoning is allowed, is it?
It, it, you can give a variance. You can do a variance, or especially, it's a variance, you have to ask for a variance. But we don't have mixed use zoning. But they, the variance is based on your comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And the comprehensive plan is something that we'll be going through, we're developing a new comprehensive plan with NODO right now.
I was under the impression that state law prevented spot zoning.
It doesn't prevent, but it will, it does have it in there, I mean, it does stay in there. Like, if we allow, allow it, I mean, it could get kinda sticky in there where some people could, like a homeowner, like if we do something as residential next to a commercial building, or if we do commercial next to a residential, and say it lowers your, your property value, then the town could get sued.
Yeah, I can understand if you have a residential neighborhood, we don't wanna allow a refinery to be built in the middle of that.
And Richard, I'm, I'm going back years now, but that's basically what we had here in Hennessy, and I think why, we allowed people, and I say we, back even before I was on the board, which has been a long time, but even before that, people were allowed, although there was zoning, they would come in, I wanna zone these four lots for such and such, in a residential area, because my wife's gonna put in a huge shop, but I'm gonna put in a small office. And the town, at the time, well, I like that so and so, let's do that. Pretty soon, we had splotches of different zonings all over the community, and we really had a hodgepodge of things. So the town, in their thinking, tried to get more strict on having a zoning and not allowing spot zoning, so those kinds of things didn't happen.
I can understand that for a residential neighborhood.
You know, and that being said, I have probably been approached, I'm gonna estimate six times in the last month to month and a half, people who have come to me individually and want to do something that's going to violate the zoning. And I tell them, I don't have the power to give you permission to do that. The town board doesn't have the power to give you permission to do that because we have the limits and place for that. And, but it, it has, it's really been kinda overwhelming, and I don't know why, just in the last month to six weeks, but I've been approached multiple times about people wanting to, well, can't I just do, I've got this over here, can I just do that? And it's totally, totally not what I'm saying, so...
So maybe it's the state of the economy that's causing this.
Maybe.
Cheaper to operate at home. I understand the residential part.
But I, but I think in a commercial, you can have any lesser use, which would be residential. So if a building is, say, if somebody wanted to buy the building next door and make that into residential apartments, that could, that is...
Well, same when I was told, on the Chaplin Station, I wanted to zone it into residential. And there's a good reason for that. I, I couldn't, I was told I could not do that because spot zoning, it was surrounded by commercial, you cannot pick one property and rezone it. So, that hooked me in a commercial rate. That means I have to put more money down, the loan, instead of being for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, is for three or five years. And interest rate, instead of being four percent, or three percent, as rates have gotten so low, is now seven to nine percent. And at the same time, we've got empty buildings sitting on Main Street. So if somebody were to at least come in, I prefer to have a business in there, but if somebody wanted to come in and make it residential, they can. Now, we don't have to decide anything because I was told that it was a state law, when I asked for this, that it was a state law, Oklahoma Legislature said no spot zoning. So, that's not true. It gives the town more flexibility on a commercial. So, don't have to make a decision. If somebody comes in and you got an empty building and they wanna make a residential or something...
They would be allowed to do that.
They can put in for a variance. But that may not, their variance may not get approved because it, I mean, anybody can put in a variance for a zoning, but it may not be staff's, I would say staff's recommendation for approval to the Board of Adjustment for approval, because of what it is. I mean, 'cause if, according to our comprehensive plan.
Well, the comprehensive plan can be changed.
So...
Yeah. Every town has their rules, and if they're, if they're no longer accomplishing our objectives, we need to change the rules. Now, in DC, you didn't need permission from the town government. If you were in a commercial area and wanted to convert it to residential, you could do it, as long as you took it down, didn't need, didn't need government permission. It gives us more flexibility, and I'm gonna drop that subject unless somebody has more questions on it.
I, I don't, other than, than, I, I wouldn't be in favor of the town being allowed to do spot zoning, because I'm afraid at some point it would open it up. We've worked really, really, really hard and made some tough decisions, and have, in the process, upset some residents because we didn't spot zone.
You're talking about the residential, pretty commercial and residential.
Well, or industrial in a commercial and things of that nature. Because if you look at our map, we're, we're pretty uniform. Our zoning map is, is pretty uniform. We don't have these little hodgepodge zonings around. And I think, you know, one of the things, back in two thousand, when twenty-ten was being formed, and the people stated what they wanted, they wanted a cleaner community, correct me if I'm wrong, Bart, you were there.
You're right.
A cleaner community, and wanted things more, more uniform, and more, more structured, I guess, is, is the way of it.
And I think they didn't want vacant buildings on Main Street, probably.
No, you're right, you're right.
It's, I don't give a...
But if somebody wanted to make an apartment out of one of these vacant buildings, they would be allowed to do that because it's a lesser use than commercial.
Yeah, you, you can do that.
I don't know that.
The problem, the problem is...
You just can't go the other way.
The problem is, the Chaplin Station carries a commercial zoning. And when it goes to the lenders, they wanna see everything, blood tests and everything else. But it has the commercial zoning, you can't do the residential financing. So, the other thing is, the motel tax. I, when I was at the Grantler Show last year, the leader of that group brought it up, nobody asked a question. She brought it up, that the motel tax is not as restricted as many people think. And in that, I, there should've been a letter from, I didn't check the packet, there should've been a letter from the Oklahoma Municipal League, they go through that. It's not in there with the street name, it's not. You can read it. I don't think, I didn't see it, but when I first, I'm sure of that.
You know, I just, I don't know if it works. I was a lot of people, I don't know.
Yeah, I apologize, I sent about half a dozen emails, it was confusing.
You're fine.
I, I even confused you different, how this person, if you got it, email from you.
I know, I got one that said, two apartments available, and I'm like, hmm, okay. Two rooms available, two rooms available, and I'm like, okay.
My son's the name Tiffany, it's like, how in the world did Tiffany know about this? Cause it's... But anyway, the, in the street it, next to town. But it gives examples, Tulsa, they're using their motel tax to build, build this. So, maybe we can, anything that enhanced the community, there's a pretty broad perspective.
Yeah, it is, it is broad, yeah, you're right, it is, our wording is, you know.
I was operating under assumption it, it could be used for advertising.
Our, our city attorney has told us that it cannot be used for brick and mortar projects.
Tulsa, do you need to read that?
That is, that is because of how Tulsa's ordinance was written.
Okay.
And the way our... And the way ours is written, we cannot use it for brick and mortar.
You need to change our ordinance.
In order for us to be able to.
Well, that's what people vote or don't know.
Yes, in order for us to change ours, we would have to go back to the vote of the people. And if we went back to the vote of the people, we would even risk losing it. Because if it did not go through, then, then we would lose it.
It was presented to the people for certain uses and that's what they voted on. And then analogy would be like putting up a bond issue to build a dome. And then once it passes, build something else, you can't do that. This tax was specified for these certain uses and that's what the people voted on. So we can't legally change it.
Okay, now, in that ordinance, there's about ten different things listed it can be used for. So let's say add number eleven or number twelve.
We, we can't because that wasn't how it was presented when the people voted on it.
But we could vote for an amendment.
Not without putting it before a vote of the people.
That's fine, let's do that.
But like Tiffany said, we may lose it completely.
Boy, you mean.
With the econ, with the economy like it is, they're, they're gonna be voting on that tax, whether to have it or not, if we amend it. We can't vote on an amendment, we will have to put the whole thing back up for a vote. So if they vote the tax down, then our motel hotel tax goes away.
I say put it up for a vote, I think the people are pretty understanding of what we need to do.
I'd be, I'm, I'm really afraid in our economic times right now, as tough as things are, I'm afraid people may vote it down.
What are you wanting to do with the tax, split? Use it for the other.
Yeah. Yes, their lawyer said, but it is, it's pretty broad, though, as a thing, as you can use it, you know, advertising.
Right.
For events or something that are going on, that's gonna help your sales tax and that. We use it for the Fourth of July fireworks.
It also helps the hotels, the hotels, I mean.
We use it for the fireworks, the Fourth of July fireworks. We use it for. I mean, it does have some broad things, but if your lawyer says. No brick and mortar project.
Well, maybe we can do a survey, if we're gonna do a survey on garbage pickup, do a survey on the motel tax. That we could use it for a pavilion, which I think would enhance the town. I think the White Festival, just the funeral.
When you're saying a survey, do you mean ask people whether or not they would vote for it?
Yeah. We're gonna do that for garbage pickup.
Yeah, but it's, but we're not asking them to vote on that.
It's more, you know, the opinion survey, that's what a survey is, it's not voting, it's a survey.
Let me do that where it's on the town website, so people could go in or.
I'm gonna ask Jack to help me.
Okay, okay, good.
Just, isn't it like, you could just do a Google form or something?
Yeah, or Survey Monkey?
Yeah, Survey Monkey, no, that works really well.
Survey Monkey?
It's a great website to use QR codes and everything. That's how we get done everything in college, it's really useful, so.
The ordinance that was voted on should have been written to allow a little bit more flexibility. I know when we had the speaker at the Vision Committee, one of the first things she brought up was the pad at the Aquatic Center. That you, we didn't, we didn't know what these pads were twenty years ago. But now we have them.
Flat pads.
And she made the point, she used that as an example of why you do not make your donations too restrictive. You gotta make them broad-based. The problem was when this motel law was passed, it was made too restrictive. There should have been, and all other purposes that enhance the town, including buildings and streets, airplanes.
I, I think the.
Fire trucks, weather.
I don't, I don't think the public would want us to, I think, the, if we were to, if the public saw that we had a greater area where we could use the money, that we'd probably be something dumb and spend it all. I think they would either have something more focused on. I think that they would either have something more focused on what we should use it, not, not abroad. I'm just, not saying that we would do something dumb, but it's that, I just think that there's that little trust in public government that.
Being on a town council and attending the town council as a citizen, I think sometimes you underestimate our citizens. Sometimes I think our citizens are ahead of the town council.
It could be.
And anytime you have change, I guess change is a risk, profit is a reward for risk. Change comes at a risk. So, anyway, I think, I think that brings it to a finish.
Okay. And there is to item E, and Richard has withdrawn that from the agenda. So item F, discussion with possible action to appoint member to the County 911 Board. Hank Webber was our appointee on the County 911 Board. And due to his resignation, we now don't have a representative. I am gonna make a motion that we appoint Tiffany Tillman to that 911 Board position.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
I thought she was on there at one time, what did you say?
I was, she was, yeah.
Uh, from the get, from the beginning. Making a little circle.
What is, what is there, what did they do, what is that?
I don't know. I'm hoping it's in a better spot than when I left it.
I mean, really.
Don't hold your breath.
Were they the ones that were trying to get the communication together?
Yeah.
Yes. And they, they are in charge of operating, operating the 911 system.
Yeah, they have their problems.
The county commissioner appointed the original board and then the county commissioners stepped back and it was up to that board from that point on.
To develop, to put people in.
And, and to keep it, they.
Yeah, each town has a.
They hire and fire.
We, we have to pay, doesn't the city pay any of that?
Our taxes.
We did it first, didn't we?
No.
Oh, we did.
Our, it's paid through sales tax on landline and cell phones.
Yeah, you pay a, a 911.
That's right, that's right.
It's not your phone bill.
Every minute, a fifty cent job you're doing.
Yeah.
Yes. If, if we use their dispatch center, I think we, we'd be in charge of the. Some cities in the county, you use that for daily dispatch.
Right, yeah.
And they do pay for that.
Well, the city keepers, you guys have.
They do.
Yeah. That's worth it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, roll call?
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes? Richard?
Yes.
Give mail, give, give mail out.
Item G's accept, reject any resignations, not receive part of posting agenda. New business, citizens comments, anybody?
I'm quiet.
You already called your phone. Councilperson reports.
I got a question. Just, just a suggestion, I don't even know the scenario on this. But Richard has brought up a, a good point some time ago, when we talked about doing things, community development, things like this, I don't wanna drag this out. But, and I know we closed our swimming pool. Are we ahead of, was our game money good enough that we, here's what I'm suggesting, if we can do this. Take all of the money above for our expenses, well, if there was any, set that aside for future down the road maintenance.
Do you know where we're at yet?
No, I, I.
Tiffany's two and a half week.
I know.
You're gonna put me two and a half weeks behind.
Yeah, I didn't know, I mean, I'm not putting any pressure here, I just was thinking about it. I think that's a grand idea. But I don't even know if we made expenses, you wanna mean that or what?
Yeah, I'll have to look, but the only thing is, is all of that goes into the general fund and it's really hard because it's not its own separate accounting. So everything goes into the general fund and gets budgeted.
Hard to separate it out.
Yes. And so you budget it and do everything through the general fund and so you just don't set everything aside to next year.
But you, you, you will kind of have an idea of what our expenses were for operation, chemicals, personnel and such.
Well, you know, the things are so expensive, you know, we get down here, I'm just throwing this out here. Let's say we're into the pool fifteen, twenty years down the road. We do need to make some repairs to it.
Look at Tim Morris' phone. Yeah.
It'd be nice if we had the money to say, you know what, let's go fix that.
Yeah.
But I don't even know what's there, I don't even know if we made expenses, I don't.
No, I mean, it's just the town's gonna have to just do it then.
I don't like if we do our water plant.
Well, we just, this swimming pool has never made a profit, did it?
No, you just did that something.
No, but I'll tell you something. We've never had a swimming pool in Hennessy before for this summer. It took in twenty-two thousand dollars in water.
Oh, man, I know that one deposit was big. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that was huge and it just.
Well, and.
It just said to me how much the people wanted it and loved it and are using it, which is what it's there.
I would go to the pool and I would see people there and three, four of them were not from Hennessy.
I know a woman from Garban, her three kids, to the swimming pool. I was talking to my neighbor and he said, we have some friends from cash and they're coming up here.
Yes.
There was a daycare.
Oh, I think that is a good point, Richard raised, we build these things and.
Are you seconding?
Everything is so expensive that we get caught in a trap that we can't fix it, so it runs down. You wanna mean, it's a shame.
Okay, councilperson reports, anybody got anything, Keith?
Oh, I mean, I did that research, I'm doing some more, I'll, I'll have some next month. Richard, you been talking about it?
I, no, that's fine, just, you know, if you had anything.
What are you doing?
I was.
I was, open your mouth.
I was comparing, staying where Hennessy landed salary-wise for, for the police and officers versus other towns our size, bigger and smaller, so.
We just pay them and they leave, that's what happens, you know.
Well, I, I found out that we're, we're at the top of the list of, of that, both, both aisles. And Chief, and, no, at the very top, the like, top four of the towns that I had, so.
We're in the top twenty-five percent each time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Cliff, you got anything?
No, sir.
Wes?
Hi, Richard. This January meeting, community-wide meeting, is fabulous. And I think that we need to set a date and get people to thinking about it and start bringing up issues and talking about it now. And I think the big thing is, is infrastructure. You gotta have, you gotta be able to flush your toilet, that's civilization.
Right, yeah.
And so, but, and other things, you know, going back to that survey, I had a bad experience at the four, four-way stop there at eighty-one fifty-one. You know, one, on the survey, one of the things was a signal light.
That is, you must have had a bad experience.
I, I think it would make it worse with the light because.
I have tried and tried, I have talked to.
That's not, that's not up to us.
DOT to get a stoplight there and there's not enough traffic.
That's a state highway, it's, it's the.
That's hard to believe, and it's very hard, I know it's true.
At Kingfisher, I look at that intersection thirty-three and eighty-one and they got a, you know, they got a stoplight there.
There's a lot of traffic down there, though, I've been there. I've been there, there, there's a lot of traffic.
It's horrible.
At that stoplight.
Even with the stoplight, it's like, it's scary sometimes.
Yeah, DOT says that there's not enough stuff, or traffic, to, to put in a stoplight there.
Sometimes you need one on Iowa, you can get off Iowa.
That's true.
I mean, I, I have sat there for fifteen minutes, I, I won't go down, I'll just go down the side street. Cause I feel the side streets coming here, so. I make a motion to adjourn.
Cliff? Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.